She's agreeing.
Are you ready to shout? Are you ready to shout?
Hello.
Who does this baby belong to?
Ellison.
She's gonna be the one who like goes up to the kidnapper and stinger.
It's like you're not in Texas.
More accountable.
Ellison.
Ellison.
Oh, perfect.
JD's got keys on her. Picture though.
She could be on trial or something.
She's like, what? She's like, I'm sticky.
You know, she got her vaccines yesterday. Like, she didn't cry until, yeah, she got her first. She got her twelve vaccines. She's had a little, like, two, but anyways, they gave her her COVID-19 vaccine and then for chicken pox. And she had two in the morning. That's right. One of them was a lateral tyne, one of them was a lateral. And she, she didn't feel it go in. But when it pressed, I said, oh, yeah, she started crying. And then I assumed that it was done, so she grabbed her snack out of her bag. She ate her snack straight away. And she was like, yeah.
How are you?
She was just kind of down. Like, as these things, so like, last night, she was really bummed. Yeah. She, um, she had a left heart attack. She had a cardiac arrest. That's right.
Morning, Catherine.
Ellison. Ellison. Ellison.
Oh, perfect.
JD's got keys on her. She's honest. Take a picture though.
She could be on trial or something.
She's like, what? She's like, I'm sticky.
You know, she got her vaccines yesterday. Like, she didn't cry until, yeah, she got her first. She got her twelve vaccines. She's had a little, like, two, but anyways, they gave her her COVID-19 vaccine and say her, um, chicken pox. And she had two in the morning. That's right. And one of them was a lateral. And she, she didn't feel it go in. But when it pressed, I said, oh, yeah, she started crying. And then I assumed that it was done, so she grabbed her snack out of her bag. She ate her snack straight away. And she was like, yeah.
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
I like JD. I like.
Hope I get him home for his flight.
It's, it's happening. Just got in the screen. Just holds it. She just called upstairs.
Yeah.
Um, JD. She just got up. She just got up. She just called upstairs. Yeah, she just called upstairs. Great ones, Lee. Jason's on the line too. Okay. It looks like two of the. You guys ready? You ready? Yeah. You got all the words, the big words? I think so. Okay. Good.
Good morning, everyone. I ask you to please rise for opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance before we convene the Commissioners' Public Meeting. Dear and Father, we thank you for a new day, and you've granted us the gift of life. Today, today we'll celebrate lives in our meeting, and also remember another group without them, we would not have our freedoms. We celebrate, recognize, and honor the members of our medical service, the first responders, paramedics, technicians, dispatchers, firefighters, police, emergency nurses, and physicians. They're the ones on the front lines, whether they're paid or volunteering to protecting, treating, and caring for our communities. They're the ones that run into an emergency at a moment's notice to help their fellow man, may he provide them strength and safety as they do their daily jobs. Father on Monday will reflect on those that courageously laid down their lives for freedom. Those patriots left their military spouses and children, having to move on in life without them. They paid the price in the name of freedom for each one of us. Lord bless their families and fill their homes and lives with strength and peace. Father, you yourself have taught us that there is greater no love has no one than this, to lay one's life down for their friends. May we always honor their memories. Guide us as we properly care for the wounded comrades, keep us alert that we remain diligent and watchful caretakers of the freedoms and liberties they gave their lives. Remember President Ronald Reagan's words, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." We didn't pass it to our children in a bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on to them to do the same. Lord, help us to remember that freedom is not free and for us to be worthy of their sacrifice. Let us always stand for our flag in memory of those who shed their blood. We thank you for the brave men and women who have fought and continue to defend our nation. So, Lord, this morning, we will celebrate those that rushed to save lives, and those will remember those that gave up their lives to give us our freedoms. Now our meeting be in accordance with your will. These things we humbly place before you in your name. Amen.
Would we wish to divide the United States of America and the citizenry public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Morning, everyone. At this time, we'll convene our Commissioners' Public Meeting, and we'll ask for approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
House second.
All bitters, aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, ask for, um, public comment on agenda items only. Any public comment?
None online.
Okay. We have proclamations. First would be for Emergency Medical Service Week. EMS Strong, ready today, preparing for tomorrow. Emergency Medical Service Week, May twenty-first through twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicines, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the medical, excuse me, whereas the members of emergency medical services, whether career volunteer, engaged in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Service Week now, and therefore, we, Commissioners of Lycoming County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and recognition then to hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Service Week, with EMS Strong theme, EMS Week, where Emergency Care Week begins to encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, signed by the Lycoming County Commissioners, Scott L. Metzger Chairman, Tony Armisar Vice Chairman, and Richard Maribito Secretary. This is one of my favorite, um, recognitions of the year, because we are so blessed, amazing emergency services in this county, and many of them are my friends, um, the dedication and time that they put in this, um, the training, often at their own expense, the training itself, uh, is incredible, and the expense, you know, if you go up to a, if you stop by at one of the, um, the dinners, and you go through the volunteer services, I often go to Old Lycoming to the fish fry, and they had the expenses of what the equipment costs, just the equipment alone, and a lot of the times, that comes out of their own pocket, and, uh, and how they do that is beyond me on their salaries, and so, with that said, thank you, thank you so much for what you do, because our communities would not be safe without you, and the dedication, you leave your families at a moment's notice, Hutch and Beth live across the street from me, you know, their headlights hit my house at all times of night and day, and I know they're responding to some kind of emergency, and I know they're doing it out of the love for their fellow human beings, as each one of you do. You don't do these professions to get rich, you do these professions because you care and you love your human being, and we thank you for your service. When you're in a situation where you need help, and you hear those sirens coming, it seems like that maybe fifteen, twenty minutes, you can hear those sirens off in the distance, but when they get there, and you find out they were there within seconds or minutes, and the care that they give you is unmeasurable, so again, thank you for what you do, um, and continue to do, because you are EMS Strong, without you, we wouldn't have our communities, you are our communities, you're the face of our communities, so thank you.
Yeah, too, why don't we read that one? I mean, they're interrelated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'll read the second.
I didn't mean to jump ahead, I'm just, I get passionate about this.
No, 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 that's fine. Okay. Celebrate EMS C Day, Emergency Medical Services for Children, whereas more than thirty million children receive emergency medical care each year due to illness or injury, and whereas the needs of children are different than the needs of adults in medical emergencies, and whereas the goal of the Emergency Medical Services for Children is to help states and communities prepare for an emergency involving a child through the provision of pediatric-ready emergency departments and emergency medical services and agencies, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services for Children program supports research and improvement science to drive transformation of emergency care services, whereas medical, Emergency Medical Services for Children relies on its established partnership within the Emergency Medical Services community, as well as multidisciplinary teams of healthcare providers across the emergency care continuum, to help states and communities reduce child and youth disability and death due to severe illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services for Children, the tens of thousands of pre-hospital and hospital-based practitioners and families it serves, and the professional organizations and federal agencies of which its partners are committed to ensure the delivery of high-quality emergency care for children, and whereas it is proper and timely to bring recognition to the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services for Children, and the dedicated personnel who work tirelessly to improve the delivery of pediatric care across the emergency care systems. Now, therefore, we, Commissioners of County of Lycoming and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the date of May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Service for Children Day. That may be the wrong name. As part of National EMS Week in Lycoming County, and urge all citizens and healthcare professionals serving the pediatric population to celebrate the EMS Strong theme, EMS Week, rising to the challenge, to become familiar with EMS F, EMS C, its programs and activities in our state and nationally, and to support and participate in education and outreach programs to increase the knowledge of the best pediatric medical care practices, signed by Scott L. Metzger Chairman, Tony Misere Vice Chairman, and Rick Maribito Secretary.
So, what can we say to you? Um, you know, first, we say thank you on behalf of the citizens, as people who represent the citizens, we say thank you. As I was listening to that, I was also saying and thinking to myself, we need to thank your families, because I know that doing the work you do takes a toll on the people that you love, and oftentimes, you need to have someone who's on the same place as you are in terms of understanding why you do the work you do, and if they don't necessarily understand that, it can be very difficult, but we have to try to help them understand why they do what, why you do what you do. You know, I think about watching a program like Law &amp; Order and seeing some horrible situation, and then I think about all of you going out every day in those situations. Honestly, I don't know how you deal with it, but I hope that you won't ever let it numb you, and that you'll know that if it gets to the point where you need help for understanding why some of the horrific things happen, that we should be able to provide that help for y'all too, and for your families, because sometimes we're left, uh, you know, yesterday was the nineteen kids in Texas, and sometimes we're just left trying to understand why these things happen, but you were the ones who were there on the front line, and we appreciate the fact that you do that. I've had the privilege of being able to travel many parts of the world, and many parts of the world, if you get into an automobile accident, you're not going to get emergency services, not because in those countries, it's bad people, but because the economies have not developed to the point where people even have access to that. So, our access to emergency medical service is a privilege that you all provide, and that obviously, we try to work together to build upon. So, I just want you to know that we appreciate it, and I am, I've always been fascinated since I became a Commissioner, is when I first learned about emergency medical care for children. I mean, I didn't, you know, you just pick up the phone and call, but that there's a whole world of people who are spending their time trying to understand how they can save a child's life, how they can prevent a child from having, uh, further injury, so we just want you to know, we take this little bit of time today to thank you, but we think about you, all your, trying to remember and say thank you to you and your families.
I'll be the third one to speak, you know, they already said it all, you know? And, you know, I think of the words professionalism, dedication, commitment, and service to the community, it's you. That's, that's what you do, and, um, I would hope that you recognize that the Commissioners' Office here, um, regardless of what your requests are, are, we're always behind you. Uh, it's, it's not an easy job that you have. Uh, every time we see you, you're going off to a tragedy, you know? Uh, that can't be easy. Uh, I look at the corners, and I, I say the same to them, uh, you're in a, a field that, boy, not too many people experience it until they need your help. So, uh, again, you do a great job for our community, we think about you, we pray about you and for you, and, uh, you know, thanks.
Okay, I believe we have some Mercy Medical Service Awards. Bill's gonna present them.
Carla.
Carla.
I was off when he submitted that stuff for me, so. I just have a quick, hopefully, I won't bore any of you, but, um, I was sitting at my desk thinking about how to even start a thank you letter to my fellow EMS brothers and sisters in arms, for everything that you do, that we know you do, however, I can't help but wonder, just saying you are so appreciate, you, ah, sorry. You are so appreciated, means that much when it comes from another EMS provider. The answer is yes, truly and deeply, and perhaps it's even more so than I appreciate you now because of knowing where you've been and what you have been through. It is easy to forget about the role of EMS in our lives, it's a job that works predominantly behind the scenes until they are needed, countless hours of training and preparing for whatever comes your way, and usually at two, three o'clock in the morning. It is imperative that we always remind ourselves to stop and thank these EMS providers for everything they do. It's not just a job, it's a dedication to their fellow mankind, to make sure they will do everything possible to save your life. So, every year, one week, for one week, the country and the public safety community come together to celebrate and say thank you to our nation's EMS heroes. For two thousand and twenty-three, the American College of Emergency Physicians has partnered, partnered together with the National Association of EMTs to take on the theme of where emergency care begins. You don't have to work in EMS for very long to understand how much of a family it truly is. After all, we live together, get dirty in the trenches together, cry together, laugh together, miss meals together, share holidays together, feel joy together, and feel hurt and pain together. We are stronger together, out there, wherever it is that you serve, you are expected at any given second to drop everything that you are doing and prepare yourself for the worst, and while you are doing and preparing for the worst, and while the job is not performed for recognition, it is absolutely deserved. We often think of EMS just a job, and forget that it is also a total investment of your mind, body, and soul. It's a difficult profession to explain. We don't always have loved ones we can pour our hearts out to, often, we want to protect them from the horrible things we've seen, and sometimes, they just don't want to hear it because it's too much for them to listen to. And on a last note, more so than ever, with suicide and depression being one of the biggest epidemics in our profession is facing, we need each other. Stop for a minute and take the time to really take care of yourselves. And each other. Know that you are appreciated for those, for those of you not in EMS, thank your EMS providers. Show them you pair with a simple thank you, a cup of coffee, or let them in the front line trying to get food. For the love of God, let them get food. We are absolutely stronger when we stand as one. That's it. All right, so we are going to start out with Emergency Medical Responder of the Year. I have to put my glasses on for this one, I did make it big. This provider has been in EMS for close to thirty-six years, obtaining his first responder in nineteen eighty-seven, and then obtaining his EMT in nineteen ninety-one, and only renewing once. Then, he took a few years off again, and then he reapplied for EMR in two thousand and nine. He is always outgoing and willing to step up when the need arrives. This person has been a fire chief for thirty-three years and is dedicated to its community. Last year, Nipponos Valley responded to three hundred and forty calls, Dean answered two hundred and thirty-six emergencies, and was top responder for Nipponos Valley. He has always provided to the community and willing, willing to educate anyone with his experience. So, Dean?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Carla, do you want to get a picture of all of them together?
Yeah, we will, then. Oh, Dean, I'm sorry, Dean Miller Jr. And I did give it to you. Okay, next one is going to be given to you by Chief, um, Nathan Confer, if he wants to come up.
This word goes out for the EMT of the Year Award. In the afternoon of July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Officer from Lycoming Regional Police Department and EMT Neper was dispatched to Walts Road in Old Lycoming Township for a dog bite victim. Officer EMT Neper arrived along with another, uh, Lycoming Regional Police Department officer. They incurred, they encountered more than just a dog bite victim. A middle-aged woman was brutally attacked by a pit bull and shredded her right arm up past the elbow. Officer EMT Neper noticed all the blood loss was from an arterial bleed. Using her twelve years of experience in EMS, she quickly applied a tourniquet above the elbow, the patient's elbow, right arm, that was a shredded mess. Officer EMT Neper then continued with assessing the patient to see if she had any other injuries and found a broken left arm. Officer EMT Neper continued caring and treating the patient until the MECU crew transported the victim to UPMC Williamsport, and then was flown to Geisinger Danville. The patient's arm was saved due to the quick decisive action of placing a tourniquet on the victim's arm. Officer EMT Neper is credited with saving this woman's arm and her life. Later in the year, in the eve, later that year, in the evening of November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Station fifteen, MECU ninety-one, and Lycoming Regional Police Department were dispatched to Lycoming Creek Road in Hebron Township for a full rest. EMT, Officer EMT Neper arrived simultaneously and found a elderly male in full arrest. Officer EMT Neper started CPR, and the MECU crew did ALS intervention for the patient. Officer EMT Neper continued doing CPR the whole time until the pulse came back and the patient was talking to them. The patient was transported quickly to UPMC Williamsport, where he walked out of the hospital four to five days later. This is example of Officer Neper's lifesaving skills. She is credited with another lifesaving by delivering high-quality CPR. Officer Neper started her career with, like, coming, began with Old Lycoming Police Department, then transitioned to Lycoming Regional, back on May twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-one. Since day one, she has been to every EMS call she could go on, was always treating patients and demonstrating the highest quality of care any person could do. And.
The Commissioner's Office here. Regardless of what your requests are, we're always behind you. It's not an easy job that you have. Every time we see you, you're going off to a tragedy, you know? That can't be easy. I look at the corners and I say the same to them. You're in a field that, boy, not too many people experience it until they need your help. So, again, you do a great job for our community. We think about you, we pray about you and for you, and thanks.
Okay, I believe we have some Mercy Medical Service Awards. Bill's gonna present them.
Carla.
Carla.
I was off when he submitted that stuff for me, so. I just have a quick, hopefully I won't bore any of you, but I was sitting at my desk thinking about how to even start a thank you letter to my fellow EMS brothers and sisters in arms for everything that you do, that we know you do. However, I can't help but wonder, just saying you are so appreciate. You are so appreciated means that much when it comes from another EMS provider. The answer is yes, truly and deeply, and perhaps it's even more so than I appreciate you now because of knowing where you've been and what you have been through. It is easy to forget about the role of EMS in our lives. It's a job that works predominantly behind the scenes until they are needed. Countless hours of training and preparing for whatever comes your way, and usually at two, three o'clock in the morning. It is imperative that we always remind ourselves to stop and thank these EMS providers for everything they do. It's not just a job, it's a dedication to their fellow mankind to make sure they will do everything possible to save your life. So every year, one week, for one week, the country and the public safety community come together to celebrate and say thank you to our nation's EMS heroes. For 2023, the American College of Emergency Physicians has partnered together with the National Association of EMTs to take on the theme of where emergency care begins. You don't have to work in EMS for very long to understand how much of a family it truly is. After all, we live together, get dirty in the trenches together, cry together, laugh together, miss meals together, share holidays together, feel joy together and feel hurt and pain together. We are stronger together. Out there, wherever it is that you serve, you are expected at any given second to drop everything that you are doing and prepare yourself for the worst. And while you are doing and preparing for the worst, and while the job is not performed for recognition, it is absolutely deserved. We often think of EMS just a job and forget that it is also a total investment of your mind, body, and soul. It's a difficult profession to explain. We don't always have loved ones we can pour our hearts out to. Often, we want to protect them from the horrible things we've seen, and sometimes they just don't want to hear it because it's too much for them to listen to. And on a last note, more so than ever, with suicide and depression being one of the biggest epidemics in our profession is facing, we need each other. Stop for a minute and take the time to really take care of yourselves. And each other. Know that you are appreciated for those, for those of you not in EMS, thank your EMS providers. Show them you pair with a simple thank you, a cup of coffee, or let them in the front line trying to get food. For the love of God, let them get food. We are absolutely stronger when we stand as one. I didn't think I was gonna get through that. All right, so we are gonna start out with Emergency Medical Responder of the Year. I have to put my glasses on for this one. I did make it big. This provider has been in EMS for close to 36 years, obtaining his first responder in 1987, and then obtaining his EMT in 1991, and only renewing once. Then he took a few years off again, and then he reapplied for EMR in 2009. He is always outgoing and willing to step up when the need arrives. This person has been a fire chief for 33 years and is dedicated to its community. Last year, Nipponos Valley responded to 340 calls, Dean answered 236 emergencies, and was top responder for Nipponos Valley. He has always provided to the community and willing to educate anyone with his experience. So Dean?
Carla, do you wanna get a picture of all of them together?
Yeah, we will at the end. Oh, Dean, I'm sorry, Dean Miller Jr. And I did give it to you. Okay, next one is gonna be given to you by Chief Nathan Confer, if he wants to come
This award goes out for the EMT of the Year Award. In the afternoon of July 11th, 2022, Officer from Lickcoming Regional Police Department, and EMT Neper, was dispatched to Walts Road in Old Lickcoming Township for a dog bite victim. Officer EMT Neper arrived along with another Lickcoming Regional Police Department officer. They encountered more than just a dog bite victim. A middle-aged woman was brutally attacked by a pit bull and shredded her right arm up past the elbow. Officer EMT Neper noticed all the blood loss was from an arterial bleed. Using her 12 years of experience in EMS, she quickly applied a tourniquet above the patient's elbow, right arm, that was a shredded mess. Officer EMT Neper then continued with assessing the patient to see if she had any other injuries and found a broken left arm. Officer EMT Neper continued caring and treating the patient until the MCC crew transported the victim to UPMC Williamsport and then was flown to Geisinger Danville. The patient's arm was saved due to quick decisive action of placing a tourniquet on the victim's arm. Officer EMT Neper is credited with saving this woman's arm and her life. Later in the year, later that year, in the evening of November 11th, 2022, Station 15, MCC 91, and Lickcoming Regional Police Department were dispatched to Lickcoming Creek Road in Hebron Township for a full rest. Officer EMT Neper arrived simultaneously and found a elderly male in full arrest. Officer EMT Neper started CPR and the MCC crew did ALS intervention for the patient. Officer EMT Neper continued doing CPR the whole time until the pulse came back and the patient was talking to them. The patient was transported quickly to UPMC Williamsport, where he walked out of the hospital four to five days later. This is example of Officer Neper's lifesaving skills. She is credited with another lifesaving by delivering high-quality CPR. Officer Neper started her career with, began with Old Lickcoming Police Department, then transitioned to Lickcoming Regional, back on May 25th of 2021. Since day one, she has been to every EMS call she could go on, was always treating patients and demonstrating the highest quality of care any person could do. EMT Neper joined the Hebron Fire Department in April of 2022. She took the EMS captain position beginning of this year. She has been instrumental in fixing the EMS program and setting the standards for patient care. She has also, has started EMS training for the second Monday of every month. She has been instructing non-EMS members on how to be an assist while on EMS calls. She has been instructing them on patient carry, stair chair uses, other mobilization techniques, and how this delay person can do anything to help out. She goes above and beyond to make everyone feel welcome, feel needed, and feel like they're making a big impact. EMT Neper also applied and was hired by Northern Lickcoming Fire Rescue EMS and works part-time as a firefighter EMT. Firefighter EMT Neper completed all her fire courses and passed her firefighter one testing this early this year, showing that lifesaving is her mission day and night. Officer EMT Neper is the example of the EMT of the Year. She has not once, but twice been credited with saving the lives of two individuals, but has been also instrumental in making the impact on everyone's lives that she encounters. She brings extreme pride to the officers of Lickcoming Regional Police Department and the members of Hebron Township Volunteer Fire Company and the communities that she serves.
Thank you guys for everything. This is truly an amazing honor. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is EMT Instructor of the Year, who will be presenting it, is Sue Clayton.
So as you can tell, we're not much for public speaking usually. Doing other things. So, but when I decided to step back from being the lead instructor for the EMS programs in the east end of the county, I needed someone that was going to kind of pick up where I left off. So we needed someone to carry on that mission. It needed to be someone who had the ability to put people twice their size in their place, whether it be professionally or on a scene. It also needed to be someone that was organized, heartfelt, compassionate, and dedicated. But most of all, it needed to be someone who cared deeply about the future of EMS. Carrie fits the bill in all of those categories and then some. So we're pleased to honor Carrie Beth Wines as EMT Instructor. I'm not done. Just simply because she's constantly coming up with new ideas and new ways to engage her students and just doesn't let them slack in any way. I was able to observe her and she was really hesitant to take over, but she was, you know, not sure of her abilities and I'm like, you got this. I've seen you in action, so you're good. So she was doubtful, but she keeps them engaged and it's been a pleasure to have her grow in her confidence and her abilities as an instructor, so congratulations. And she keeps us, we'll be lying to her all week.
Yes, thank you guys so much. It has been absolutely insane. Like Sue said, I was super hesitant about taking the lead on this when she decided to step back, and now I'm not sure I'm ever gonna give the lead back because I found out I really enjoy it and watching these students grow and like blossom is like one of the biggest rewards ever. So thank you so much. Thanks for setting up the surprise and pipping me the entire time.
It started totally worth it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one is Rescue Technician of the Year. This individual went above and beyond the call of duty and demonstrated through his action the tenant for which Task Force 80 stands, protecting the lives of not only the Williamsport area, but the lives of everyone in the counties that the Task Force represents. This individual has put in countless hours working on the new Task Force application job description for all six disciplines, including the captain's position. He also established a training requirement and training agenda to get all the new members the required skills that they will need to handle any situation. This individual has a true passion for technical rescue, and his end goal is to provide a service to the region and have a team in place that is self-sufficient and can be relied on for years to come. Also, on March 5th, 2022, Task Force 80 was dispatched to assist with a rope rescue in Fork Township Sullivan County. Four personnel responded, led by this individual and, I'm sorry, rendezvous with Rescue 13 at Route 87 and 180. This individual briefly discussed a plan with Rescue 13 and convoyed up to World's End State Park. The team arrived and this individual was advised there were five trail runners stranded on a trail and one of them being injured approximately three miles from the command post. This individual, I'm sorry, team was taken to the scene on a UTV and found that all the runners were brought up the trail three, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place, rescuers were still coming up the trail with the use of a haul line. Lieutenant Smith and his team assisted the efforts by providing support with line management, minding, and eventually getting all of the equipment loaded into the UTV to be hauled back to the command post. It is because of these two reasons that I am recommending Lieutenant Kenneth Smith for Rescue Technician of the Year.
Thank you, I'm humbled.
Okay, and for the final award, it is the Klein AD Wire Memorial EMS Lifetime Achievement Award. It's hard to believe that Klein D-Wire has been gone for 15 years, but it is, it has been such an honor to recognize so many outstanding EMS leaders in his name. On December 17th, 2007, we lost a dear friend and colleague, Klein D-Wire, who left a huge legacy. It is because of this that the LTS EMS Council honors his memory with an annual recognition of a provider who has exhibited the same commitment that Klein did. The recipient of the Klein AD Wire Memorial EMS Lifetime Achievement Award is being presented by Kate and JJ.
Good morning. Okay. The Klein AD Wire Memorial EMS Service Award is to be given to someone who through his or her lifetime has exhibited an ongoing and extraordinary dedication to his or her community and whose significant contributions to emergency medical services and the community personify the selfless giving, compassion, and commitment that is Klein's legacy. There are few people in EMS who have survived Klein D-Wire that are as dedicated, selfless, giving, compassionate, and committed to their community, but the recipient of this award today is definitely one of them. This person has demonstrated honorable service to his community, starting as early as his teen years as a junior fire department member, with a little endorsement from Mark Lusk, who I think, oh, is here. He was approved as an active member with Old Lickcoming Volunteer Fire Company in 1982. Between 1985 and 2008, he became a captain, qualified for his firefighter one, became an EMT instructor, and then became assistant chief in 2008. The fire department continues to be this man's home away from home. He worked as an EMT from 1979 to 1984, was then a pre-hospital nurse from 1984 to 1998, I'm sorry, 1988, and a staff nurse in the Williamsport Hospital ER from 1988 to 2005. He continued his career in healthcare as a medical case manager while furthering his education from the Williamsport Hospital of Nursing and then his Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Lickcoming College. He spent 26 years as an ER nurse at Williamsport Hospital and then resigned in 2005 to take a position as a flight nurse with Geisinger Health System where he continues to work part-time. He was a deputy coroner in Lickcoming County from 1986 to 1998 and has served as the Lickcoming County coroner since January 2000. In this time as coroner and as a member of EMS, he has gone above and beyond the duties by being involved in several agencies that focus on how to minimize the number of preventable injuries and deaths in the county. When asked by Larry Stout from Web Weekly back in 2018, what he was most proud of, his response was in regards to one of his first initiatives as coroner in 2001, where together he and Tom Marino, DA at the time, formed the Lickcoming County Child Death Review Team, with one of the primary concerns being teen driving fatalities. Through teen driving fatality data in the county, he was able to create a map showing where these incidents occurred and the cause, and had it distributed throughout schools in Lickcoming County. The result was a drastic reduction in teen driving accidents. He continues to participate in mock crashes across the county with the initiative to promote teens to practice safe driving skills such as not drinking and driving, using illicit substances, speeding, or texting while driving. In 2008, he and his wife established a Lickcoming County partnership with the Cribs for Kids Program to provide portable cribs to hundreds of local low-income families in need while educating the importance of safe sleep. This also started a partnership with former PA Representative Garth Everett and now Representative Joe Hamm and the Lickcoming County Commissioners to recognize November as Infant Safe Sleep Month, not just in the county but statewide. This man is the co-chair of the DUI Advisory Council, which just celebrated its 35th anniversary by receiving the Mary Ann Bowman Award. According to the state, since the beginning of this program, Lickcoming County DUI numbers have decreased by 66%. He has been serving as the vice president for the Lickcoming County Health Improvement Coalition since 2014. Alongside his position at ALCEC, in 2011, he became the chair to one of its task forces, Safe Kids Lickcoming County, with the mission being to reduce injuries and fatalities of children throughout the community via education. He has assisted in providing safety products throughout the county such as bike helmets, child safety seats, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide alarms, all of which has been achievable through grant funding and donations. He serves as treasurer of the Lickcoming County Law Enforcement Association, and prior to COVID-19 pandemic, he annually hosted a day-long coroner law enforcement and EMS continuing education seminar for members around the region to attend. In 2015, he was elected to serve as the president of the PA Coroner's Association, and prior has been the liaison to the PA Coroner's Education Board for many years. His presidency brought many challenges as he became a leader across the state while coroner and medical examiner sought guidance during the pandemic. He is the chairman for the Mass Casualty Response for Pennsylvania. He wrote, trained, and established current operational guidance for mass casualty response for the state of Pennsylvania. He sought and secured funding for four mass casualty trailers prior to the pandemic and continues to keep these trailers maintenance and stocked with supplies so they can be deployed at any time. He is a member of the International Association of Forensic Nurses, National Emergency Nurses Association, and the International Association of Coroners and Medical Examiners. He served as adjunct faculty for Pennsylvania College of Technology and Bucks County Community College, instructing EMS and death investigation classes across the region and has requests throughout the years to teach at other colleges and local high schools. His most recently secured projects, a custom Safe Kids trailer funded by Geisinger that is actively being built at Transport Design, and I'm sure to the community's absolute delight, a building for the coroner's office. So thank you to the commissioners for that. This man and Klein became best friends while they were roommates in nursing school, and Klein was the best man in his wedding. On the day, on the day God called Klein home, he and his wife rushed to the hospital to be with Klein's wife, Mary, who wished she could be here, but she's out of town, desperately hoping for a positive outcome. Mary continues to be his wife's best friend and a member of our family. His commitment to his community is without a doubt a lifetime commitment as he continues to serve with no end in sight, just as Klein did. In his serving, he has promoted ambition of others in his community to serve as well, myself being one of them as I took the pathway to obtain my EMT, something I always swore to him I would never do. Much like Klein, this man will leave a hole in our community when he is gone, but we certainly hope that as he continues to serve the community, others will strive to do the same, no matter what role it be in, fire department volunteer, flight nurse, instructor, coroner, all of which are incredibly vital roles. So I think he knows who he is.
Back for crying.
So JJ helped me with this nomination, so I'll let JJ move my bow.
He's kind of an overachiever.
Chuck, we do have a question for you. What do you do in your spare time?
I sleep once in a while. I learn stuff about, I don't even think I do. I guess I have.
Chuck's been a major influence in many, many people's lives. He's an incredibly humble individual. Him and Klein, for me, they both were instructors in my EMT class. Chuck then would be a part of my instruction in my paramedic training as I started, then he would run calls with me as a paramedic when I got started. I'd then work with him. Little do people know that back in the day, Chuck and another nurse, Dom Brooks, were him and another nurse, a doctor, a tech, and a unit clerk handled the entire emergency room at Williamsport by themselves on a shift, on a night shift. Today, they only allow a nurse to like three patients, they get it all. So he's an amazing individual, much deserving of it, and as an award recipient of this myself, this is long overdue, he should have been receiving this long ago, so congratulations.
That's the best part, you tell your daughter.
JJ, don't play me for any of that.
I just gotta thank everyone in this room and those that are not here, but it's just been a wild ride. I was just thinking about some things this morning, and that my whole life has been centered around public safety and public service, and, you know, whether it's in the ER, in the field, or wherever, and it's just been an incredible experience. And, you know, I hope to have a few more years left, but it's unbelievable. It's been over 45 years I've been doing this crazy stuff, and, you know, hopefully, God willing, I'll keep going because we certainly need everybody in this room, you know, and more people to follow along and learn from us and keep, you know, this public service going because we can't, you know, do it without the volunteers in our communities, and we need to support their efforts in any way possible, and I certainly will continue to do so as long as I can, so thank you. It's really neat to have your daughter fall in your footsteps and for her to present the award. It's full circle, it's really neat to see that. It's amazing to be able to do that, and, you know, she wasn't real keen on this fire and EMS stuff for many years, but.
Nope.
I'm starting to see that, you know, we all have to help each other and help our communities, and so we're here as first responders and last responders, so, and everything in between, so thank you. Okay, I just wanna add one more thing. Yesterday, I was honored to be asked to speak at the Salvation Army Recognition for their volunteers, and one of the things I mentioned that, which pertains to every one of you, when you volunteer or whether you're paid, here's three things. You show the mercy of God. You're out there showing the mercy of God. You show the love of God, and you show the heart. God gives you the heart to serve. So those things, I just wanted to mention those three things. That's what each one of you possess, and they're gifts, and we thank you again for your service. So let's get a picture.
get a picture.
I'm gonna turn you.
I was gonna say, Paul stay straight if we kind of turn a little and turn a little.
Yeah.
Chuck, you come up though.
Really?
I'm hiding.
Turn side, okay, then we slide.
Oh my God, and I had mine upside down.
No one moves yet, no one moves yet.
Don't move.
On the count of three, one, two, three.
Can we, can we get the five award winners?
Yep.
All right, on the count of three, one, two, three.
You're welcome to stay if you want, or you're welcome to leave. So, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I have presented for your ratification our invoices due through May thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three to be paid on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, in the amount of one million, one thousand, five hundred, fifty dollars and fifty three cents. The breakdown is as follows, with forty-two point zero one percent being funded by the general fund at four hundred, twenty thousand, seven hundred, ninety-seven dollars and four cents. Eight point one nine percent is being funded by grants and other sources at eighty-two thousand, fifty-eight dollars. Thirteen point eight four percent is being funded by RMS at one hundred, thirty-eight thousand, six hundred, twenty dollars and ninety-two cents. And thirty-five point nine five percent is being funded by escrow at three hundred, sixty thousand, seventy-four dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Okay, uh, motion.
I'll move to approve. Uh, second.
Is there any questions or comments for Kaylin? Here you go, all favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Next, I have presented the special check run for the Pennsylvania College of Technology that was paid on May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three for one hundred and five thousand, three hundred, eighty-eight dollars. The breakdown is as follows, with it being funded a hundred percent by the general fund.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve. Uh, second.
Any questions or comments? Here you go, all favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. This time, we recess the Commissioners' Public Meeting for the Salary Board, and we convene the Salary Board. Hey, Director?
Yeah, um, Salary Board, uh, seeking your approval on the, the following action as outlined in attachment B. And, and let me just clarify something. Um, the list of, of names and the actions, uh, we are, uh, ending the compensation for long-term, long-term vacancy coverage and the extra straight time on this list of individual, individual employees, um, because we have, uh, changed our approval process. And so now, uh, in order for, uh, a department to request, um, long-term vacancy coverage or extra straight time, it needs to go in front of the salary. So, we're taking this action to end them, uh, now, and then if anybody needs to request, uh, this coverage, they'll do so through HR and salary corporation.
Matt, can I just say one thing? Um, this document says that we're requesting to approve, so I just want to make sure that the language here is correct.
Right, we're approving the, the.
Termination. We should add the word, yeah, add the word termination.
Okay. Cause that seems like we're approving it to go into place, not removing it.
Right. So, just so the employees understand what's going on, and.
Can I have one thing?
Yeah.
We're approving for the periods of time that are listed.
Correct.
Right.
And some of them are a little bit different.
Yes. Okay, good.
Yeah, so, no, just so the employees understand and also so the public understands that whatever things happen with salary, they have to be done with the Salary Board publicly, with the other people who are part of the Salary Board in addition to the Commissioners, and, um, so part of this is trying to reset and recognize that when these decisions are made, they have to be basically done and, and voted on, uh, publicly, and so, uh, we're not terminating these to say to the people that we do or do not think that they are entitled to have it, we're saying that, okay, we now have a new company, a new policy in effect regarding this, and so the department head would appropriately apply if they believe that the situation warrants it. And there's a criteria in the policy manual as to what warrants somebody getting, uh, the, uh, extra compensation. We want to be fair. When someone is out, uh, for, you know, a long time because there's a vacancy, we want to be fair to employees. At the same time, there has to be accountability, uh, both on the Commissioner's part to know what's happening, and also accountability to the public. So that's, that's what this is being done to do, is to reset our situation.
And HR is going to be communicating a plan for how to request, um, these to be added to their staff for the future, so I'll be sending communication out about that by the end of the week, so that they know how to request them to be put in place as needed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, do you want to read the names?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, in budget and finance, uh, Kaylin Barnes, administrative specialist effective January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Carissa Seals, accountant, effective eighteen September, two thousand and twenty-two through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Lori Weston, lead physical technician, effective January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, in planning and community development, Heather Lehman, financial administrative supervisor effective Nov- uh, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two through May nine, two thousand and twenty-three. In human resources, Tatiana Turner, uh, human resources generalist, effective March nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, twenty-three. Allison Wolf, human resource, human resources business partner, effective March nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. In the sheriff's office, Michelle McDermott, administrative specialist, effective March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. In the courts, Catherine Winder, Magisterial District Court Supervisor, effective January one, two thousand and twenty-two through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. In the prison, Damian Toner, administrative specialist, effective January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. In RMS, uh, Dennis Brewer, resource recovery supervisor, effective January two thousand and twenty-two, January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Jessica Di Parto-Lamo, clerk three, AP, Waymaster, effective April two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Dori Lobach, clerk three, Waymaster, effective April two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-three. Sherry Rogers, assistant business manager, effective April two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Heather Snyder, clerk three, Waymaster, effective April two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Steven Sims, business manager, effective November twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three through March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. McDermott, I don't mean to interrupt you. That, that last one you just read, Steve Sims, that's November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Did I say?
You read it, it just.
It's just a typo. Right, cause we haven't gotten to November yet, I mean.
Miss now.
Just for the record.
Uh, Bethany Stugger, administrative specialist, training coordinator, effective April two, two thousand and twenty-three through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. And then, uh, requesting the approval of these time periods, which we are also terminating, and this is for the exempt straight, or extra straight time pay. In budget and finance, Carissa Seals, accountant, effective December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three. And in RMS, Steven Sims, business manager, effective November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two through May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So, uh, like a motion.
I'll move.
Second?
I second.
So, the short message is that if the department head needs this to continue, they should go through the new process.
Yes, which I will, um, explain, um, via email here by the end of the week.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
No, just for the record.
No?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so three to one vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I ask, I'm so curious what the reason is? If you want to say.
I will.
Okay.
Yep, please. Cause you, so you're on, uh, so you can, we can hear you on, uh, live stream.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm in favor of ending these, but I am not comfortable approving the retroactive timeframe that was received, because I don't feel that enough information exists to actually approve it. I know it was already done, I can't change that, but I'm not comfortable voting to approve that.
Okay, in other words, we voted to terminate it.
Which I support.
With your support, but you don't approve the affirmation of the.
Start date.
Of the start date.
And the prior date time.
Right. Cause these people got a five percent override.
Right.
They got a five.
Or extra time.
Or extra, right, they got it because they were either covering vacancies.
Right, and we went off the old policy, which we're changing the policy now.
Right, right, and we were in compliance with the old policy.
I'm not arguing that.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I don't want to be on the record approving it because I'm not comfortable with it, with the information I had. That was before we're involving the Salary Board, and I. Chapter and verse for each person to say, yes, they should have had it, or no, they shouldn't have, and I'm not saying it should be taken back, and I'm hoping that we can do this quickly so the people that should have it get it back quickly.
Right, no, that's fine, but I, I, well, I think I'm comfortable saying that we were in compliance with the policy that we had in effect at the time.
And that's fine.
But you're correct that we should have had it done at the Salary Board and it was not done, and that is one of the things we're correcting now.
Yes.
Again, the policy was one, it was old, it was outdated.
Yes.
And this one is much more.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Carrie, three to one vote, thank you. So, this time, we will convene the Salary Board meeting, or adjourn the Salary Board meeting and reconvene the Commissioners' Public Meeting.
All right, moving on to action item six point one, Jessica, services agreement with manpower.
Yeah, seeking your approval for the services agreement with Manpower Stopping Agency. Uh, we put the agreement in place, um, in effort to find somebody to support one of our elected official offices for a maternity leave. Um, in addition to that, you know, we would have the contract in place for any other needs that we would have on a temporary basis.
And have we found somebody for that position?
We, they won't let us proceed until today, till we get this.
Till we approve.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
There are several candidates that they have, so I'm hopeful that we'll get a, a quick turnaround for, for his office.
All right. And this is one more tool in the toolbox of trying to.
For recruitment.
Yep, figure out how to keep things stepped properly.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna switch up the, uh, order just a little bit. Maya, you're gonna do six point two, six point five, and six.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning, Maya.
Um, the first item I have for you is to approve the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of April, we had sixteen.
So this comes under the heading of contracts under ten thousand dollars that the Director's allowed to approve.
That's correct.
To keep things moving.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie.
Uh, the next item I have for you, six point five, it's, uh, vote to approve the designation of agent resolution. This is for the FEMA brick, um, grant award, that's designating myself as the point of contact.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve. Second.
All favors aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And my last item is six point eight, it's vote to approve agreement with the University
of Cincinnati Research Institute. This is part of the evidence-based planning grant that, um, adult probation has, it's a hundred percent grant-funded, and what they.
26, 2022 through May 5, 2023.
So, I like motion.
I'll move.
Second?
I second.
So the short message is that if the department head needs this to continue, they should go through the new process.
Yes, which I will explain via email here by the end of the week.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor say aye. All right, so carry.
No, just for the record.
No?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so three to one vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I ask, I'm so curious what the reason is? If you want to say.
Yes, please.
I will.
Okay.
Yep, please. Because you, so you're on, so you can, we can hear you on the live stream.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm in favor of ending these, but I am not comfortable approving the retroactive timeframe that was received because I don't feel that enough information exists to actually approve it. I know it was already done. I can't change that, but I'm not comfortable voting to approve that.
Okay, in other words, we voted to terminate it.
Which I support.
With your support, but you don't approve the affirmation of the, of the start date.
And the prior date time.
Right. Because these people got a 5% override.
Right.
They got a 5% Or extra time.
Or extra, right. They got it because they were either covering vacancies.
Right, and we went off the old policy, which we're changing the policy now.
Right, right. And we were in compliance with the old policy.
I'm not arguing that point.
Okay, I just wanted to say.
I don't want to be on the record approving it because I'm not comfortable with it, with the information I had. That was before we're involving the salary board. And I, chapter and verse for each person to say, yes, they should have had it, or no, they shouldn't have. And I'm not saying it should be taken back. And I'm hoping that we can do this quickly so the people that should have it get it back quickly.
Right. No, that's fine. But I, I, well, I think I'm comfortable saying that we were in compliance with the policy that we had in effect at the time.
And that's fine.
But you're correct that we should have had it done at the salary board and it was not done. And that is one of the things we're correcting now.
Yes.
Again, the policy was one, it was old, it was outdated.
Yes.
And this one is much more.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So carry three to one vote. Thank you. So this time, we will convene the salary board meeting, or adjourn the salary board meeting and reconvene the commissioners of the meeting.
All right, moving on to action item 6.1, Jessica, services agreement with manpower.
Yeah, seeking your approval for the services agreement with Manpower Stopping Agency. We put the agreement in place in effort to find somebody to support one of our elected official offices for a maternity leave. In addition to that, you know, we would have the contract in place for any other needs that we would have on a temporary basis.
And have we found somebody for that position?
We, they won't let us proceed until today, till we get this.
Till we approve.
Yes.
Okay.
There are several candidates that they have, so I'm hopeful that we'll get a quick turnaround for, for his office.
All right. And this is one more tool in the toolbox of trying to
For recruitment.
Yep, figure out how to keep things stepped properly.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna switch up the order just a little bit. Maya, you're gonna do 6.2, 6.5, and 6.3.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Maya.
The first item I have for you is to approve the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of April. We had 16.
So this comes under the heading of contracts under $10,000 that the director's allowed to approve.
That's correct.
To keep things moving.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carry.
The next item I have for you, 6.5, it's vote to approve the designation of agent resolution. This is for the FEMA brick, um, grant award. That's designating myself as the point of contact.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carry.
And my last item is 6.8. It's vote to approve agreement with the University of Cincinnati Research Institute. This is part of the evidence-based planning grant that Adult Probation has. It's 100% grant funded. And what they will be providing is trainings on the higher risk assessment system.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so carry.
All right, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.3 and 6.4, Kate.
Maya, you want to stick around just, just for their, their grant case?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just kidding. Yeah, you're right.
Thanks, Maya.
I forgot about the pinch hit. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so...
If it has the word grant in it.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's usually Maya.
Might be safer with her. Yeah, so 6.3 and 6.4, the 2023 Paul Coverdell Forensic Science Grant, and then the First Community Foundation Partnership Grant. I'll just give you some background information on them. The First Community Partnership Grant application is due on June 1 of 2023. This is to go towards the purchase of 3341 Wahoo Drive Williamsport PA property to create a new LeComing County Coroner Facility. The purchase price is $302,000. Currently, the building was used for automotive purposes, so it's going to take a lot to change it into a forensic center. Grant funds would also be used for the purchase of a freezer and miscellaneous equipment for the facility. The amount requested is $250,000, and we're using the PA State local share, the LSA grant awarded in the amount of $100,000 that we secured to match this grant application. The Coverdell Forensic Science Improvement Grant, which is 6.4, the federal grant application is due May 31 of 2023. And these grant funds are for use in improving local forensic services, helping to eliminate backlog, workforce improvement, and incorporate emerging technologies. So the amount requested for that one is $500,000. $247,950 would be for the purchase of new equipment for the facility to include the refrigeration units, special lifts, the table, an exhaust system, et cetera. And then $225,000, or $225,000 would be used for staff salary, benefits, overtime, and training. And that does not require a local match.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second then.
Any comments or questions?
So money in grants.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah, so, so let's
Great work, guys.
I might need you to reset a couple things.
Sure.
So the purchase price is 302,000.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That was per the letter of intent.
That's per the letter of intent, right. And I'm actually doing this for the folks in this room who are trying to, and people on TV watching it who may not
That's for the building.
Yeah, right, who are not, who are watching it who may not be as intimately familiar because the numbers were gone through kind of quickly. So that's per the letter of agreement for the letter of intent for the purchase price of the building. So this Paul Coverdell Forensic Science Grant, you're hoping to get 500,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that would go towards changing it from an automotive to a forensic?
Yes.
That would be great.
A lot of the equipment.
A lot of equipment.
And the equipment.
And we can offset staffing costs.
With that.
With this as well.
Fantastic. And that's actually sort of amazing if we were able to get that. And I assume we're doing all the stops, pulling out all the stops to get it letters of support everywhere.
Oh, yeah, we've been working on it. We've been working with
On stop.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then the other one to purchase the freezer is the First Community Foundation Partnership, right? And we hope that they will understand that the commitment by the commissioners to do this really, hopefully will give them the red light to really move out and give us that 250,000.
Yes.
It would be greatly needed and they, they, we hope that they will understand the importance to the whole county, that when they grant that 250,000, they're helping the entire county.
Right. Well, throughout this entire journey from the get-go, we had every intention of applying for grants, but to apply for these grants, we have to have a secured building.
Right.
So
That's great.
We've been ready to go. And now we have these two grants and I
And I feel confident. I mean, this Paul Coverdell Forensic, honestly, it's been a grant that I've shared with them for several years and other ways to find, because we didn't have a building, but other ways to offset their, their costs. And we just haven't been able to make it happen because again, you needed to be shovel ready and have a project. And so the good news with this particular grant is that this is something we can continue to submit for annually. So that's promising because that's the biggest thing is getting your foot in the door and having a viable project. Once you're in there, then, you know, that's good. So we'll continue to hit this annually every year once, assuming we're successful. And if we're not, we're going to keep trying. But I would hope for the First Community side, when Chuck and I did this, what, three years ago now, I think it was?
Yeah.
We submitted an application for $1 million when our intent was to move forward with the construction or buying a building. And they supported it then. So my hope is that they will now support it now that we're ready to go.
That's great.
I have a question. It was several years ago, we took out a bond.
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was 900,000 for the corner, if I'm not mistaken. And then there was another bond or another project that we, do you remember the other project?
Chuck, how much do you have in your budget?
It was solemn. So, so we took them.
3.5. Yeah, 3.5 million for this year.
Yes, 3.5.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm listening to all these bonds, I mean, listening to all these grants, which is fantastic. But we have to spend the bond down.
Correct.
And there's no, nothing that's going to jeopardize the, the bond?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, if you look at it, I look at it as always like a wash, you know? So that's how I envision it to work.
Right. And I think the language with the bond was broad enough that the other uses that were described with it. I mean, it's there.
That's why I bring it up.
I certainly, I certainly wouldn't want the First Community Foundation to think we don't need the grant. We do need the grant because the, then the bond would be able to be used in, in other ways. But I understand.
What I'm seeing so far is that the cost is probably going to be, to do this, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million all in. So even if we get grants and bond funds, there's still going to be significant outlay. And we're still dealing with the inflated costs from COVID. So 4 million may be on the low side of where we're going to end up with this. So, but yeah, because I just got the PSA, I think I sent that to you.
Yeah, you did.
So that's projecting somewhere in that 4 million range right now, just for the, the construction, build-out additions.
That's good.
Did those numbers come from Ken?
No, they came from the architect that, that, Glenn Licken-Walner from W2 Design.
That builds these. He builds these around the state, so he's really intimately
He's built Buck's facility, he's built Northampton facility. Yeah, so he knows all the inner workings, ventilation, and everything that needs to be part of this facility for the safety and, you know, of all the personnel working in it.
That's, that's actually a good point for the public to understand that it's not like we can just buy a garage and throw a cooler in and boom. There's ventilation, there's all sorts of legal requirements as well as safety requirements that we need to meet.
Environmental, too.
And environmental, too, that's right. So, but this is great news. Thank you all for the work on the grant.
This is a good building that, because we have, we have the floor vents, we have a lot of things there.
Right.
That we don't have to locate in other facilities. So it's an ideal
Yeah, it's a good start, starting to get us off the ground.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Ideal building for it.
Where's the Coverdell grant out of?
Department of Justice.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, so do we have our, our federal guys writing grants? I mean, letters?
Yeah, that's, I've been working with the department's office.
Great, Keller, great, great.
Specifically, me and Alan have been on, on the job.
So how about a timeframe? You know, once, once the building's purchased and when would you move in or when will work be done? Will you move in before any work's done?
Well, I mean, once we have closing and we can clear out the garage area, we can move the trucks and trailers in there, into the garage, once that's suitable for doing that. The rest is going to be dependent on architectural design work. It has to be the whole, I'll send you, I just got it last night, I have the whole professional services agreement from W2A Design. I'll send that to you folks. I went over it last night with the architect. He's projecting 12 months of construction timeframe. You know, if everything falls in place and acquisition of, you know, materials and stuff is on time, you know, that's his, but we're probably looking at a year and a half if we can get, really get things going. But there's a lot of work to be done, so.
If we're alive, invite us back for the party. If we're not alive, bring us there one way or the other.
Yeah.
To the new corner building.
There you go.
Okay. Either way, we'll be there with you.
We'll be there.
Point of clarification here. You guys voted 3-0, but was that for both action items?
Yes.
Because we didn't see.
Okay.
Yep.
Nice job.
6.3 and 6.4. Nice job for everybody.
Thank you.
It's, again, it's a team effort.
It is. Every grant, it's a team effort.
Thank you. And we're a step closer, Chuck.
Yes, it's nice to know the commissioners were behind him 100% of the time.
Okay, moving on to 6.6, Austin.
No, I just add, it's nice to get a building at $300,000. Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
Morning, Commissioners.
Thank you. Morning.
So today I have for you the county's 2023 Liquid Fuels Municipal Disbursement. We're requesting to approve and disburse $155,500 in county liquid fuels to the municipalities. The 150,000 makes up the base allocation. And then there's $5,500 in LTAP course attendance, which will be distributed to the 13 municipalities that attend our LTAP courses for a total of 155,000. This disbursement is in addition to the state liquid fuels funds that the municipalities receive directly. We use these, or rather, the municipalities use these funds to perform maintenance and repair projects in their, within their own municipality. And once approved, or if approved, the county planning department will send out the liquid fuels funding announcement to all the municipalities and work with the township boroughs and PennDOT District 3 to process their requests.
Austin, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Last night, and I believe it was last night.
It was last night.
Okay, where a state representative said that the legislation either passed or on its way, talking about not being able to bank their allocation, that they would have to spend it. And when we heard that, to me, that, that does not make any common sense whatsoever because some of the money that these municipalities collect are marginal, and they wouldn't be able to do anything with it. So that would be punishing them if they were not allowed to bank that up and do it for a, a bigger project. So what are, what are you hearing?
That, I mean, we've heard that, in, in full disclosure, Sal handles this program. I'm just, you know, kind of pinch hitting for him today. So I have heard that. I do know of some municipalities that have, you know, pocketed away 10 years of liquid fuels.
Yeah.
But it's one of those things where, you know, they, they get, like you said, such a small amount, you know? Like, for example, I think like Southeastburg gets $175 a year, something like that. So they, they're limited in what they can spend it on. Certainly, you're not doing road repair or, or anything like that with that, you know, sorts of money. So I don't know about the legislation that's been put into place. That's something I have to reach out to Sal for.
Let me see if I can help. So what's happened is that there were regulations in place. When the legislature appropriates money for something, they, just like us, we say we're going to spend it on XYZ. They are under the understanding it's being spent. And so what happened is PennDOT learned that we were sort of not in compliance in some municipalities because we were aggregating money over the years. So they said, listen, you have to, there, there were, there's audits that are done at PennDOT, and they audited ours. And so they said, you have to spend that money. You can't, it would be like us giving money to a department, and we're under the impression they're going to spend it that year, and they squirrel it away. And we find out five years later that they're sitting on 20 million, yeah, $20,000 of it. So the question of whether it's a good policy to do that is sort of a separate question and one which you can change through the process of changing regulations. But what PennDOT learned in their audits was that in our communities, people were keeping the money from one year to the next. And in some cases, there was a significant amount of money. So they basically said, look, you need to spend the money, the liquid fuels money. It doesn't mean that they are on a, all they're doing, most employees who work for the public sector do what the regulations tell them to do. And the elected officials are the ones who need to set the policy, right? And so I think that, that what we need to do is if we, if we think, for example, Susquehanna Township getting $898 in liquid fuels, or the example you gave, that, that it would behoove them to be able to save it from year to year.
That doesn't even cover the cost of sealing the driveway.
Right. That's, that's a good point. You're absolutely right. So, so then that, we need to just, we need to weigh in as elected officials, and we can send a letter to PennDOT or whatever. And then what they'll do is going forth, they'll do it. But sometimes, you know, we, we, we can't have it both ways. We can't tell, say we're going to have regulations and then ask people to follow the regulations, and then we don't follow them. We, you know, we do an audit, they're not following, we tell them, you got to correct it. It doesn't mean they're bad people. It doesn't mean they're stealing money. It doesn't mean any of that. All it means is that if it says that it's being used for XYZ, it should be used for that. And so I think it would be helpful on the part, especially since we have a lot of small municipalities that get small amounts, for us to weigh in and send a letter to PennDOT and say, hey. And that's, that's, but what was significant and what Representative Hamm, I think, was referring to last night was that PennDOT's come down pretty serious about it in District 3. That's what's going on. And in fact, that's why the Transportation Department had meetings with the municipal and invited
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's, the reason why I'm pinch hitting today is Sal has, to my knowledge, 49 of the county's municipalities and the representatives, well, their staffers from the representative and senator, local senators' offices up the Old LeComing Township like right now, they're doing a training where PennDOT has come in to sort of talk about this, so.
And hopefully, in the course of that meeting, they'll be able to, those municipal officials will be able to communicate to PennDOT that, hey, we really need to aggregate. But it's, it's simply, it's like us getting an audit and finding out that, you know, they told us that
And we saved money.
Was that?
We should do that.
No, it's not saving money. It's, it's when we allocate.
For the right cause.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a common sense approach, Commissioner. I, I understand the point you're putting, you're mentioning, you're, you're emphasizing here, and I, I can understand that. But, you know, we do it in our own budget. And we just, we just had a coroner sit there. He's carried that $3.5 million in his budget from year to year to year until we found a building. And, and why should we say, go out and spend that $3.5 million on something else that you don't need?
That's not what's going on.
That's good.
What's going on is that, no, the elected officials in Harrisburg need to step up to the plate and change the regulations. That's what a representative government is, right?
Yeah.
But you can't, you can't expect
Needs to be changed.
Right. But we can't expect employees who are given a directive to make sure that money is being spent, when they do what they're paid to do, we can't turn around and attack them as somehow doing, they're doing what they're supposed to do, which is audit the money and make sure that the money's being used for liquid fuels. That's, and
These townships are on bare bone budgets.
Oh, absolutely.
And
That's why I said, the policy is different from what, you know, you always have to separate the policy decisions from what, what is existing, right? And not, you know, that, that's all. So I, I, anyway, we don't want to dwell too long on this.
All right, so I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you for pinch hitting for Sal.
We had Jason for 6.7. You still with us, Jason?
Yes, Commissioner, I am.
Thank you.
How's things over in the landfill?
Very busy. We've had an excellent week of dry weather and there's a lot of construction going on.
Good. Okay, it's good to hear. So what do you have for us today?
Well, it's a very simple one, sir. We received a price increase from Professional Petroleum, and this is just a simple amendment to their contract, the professional service agreement that we have with them. They raised $5 in their general labor rate. They raised $10 in their holiday and weekend hourly rate, and they raised $8 in their overtime rates. So that's, you know, everything else, transportation, all that's the same, but their hourly rates went up. And this is, of course, an ad nea basis. We use Professional Petroleum for truly my fuel line with inspection and repair and so forth. So it's, we, we have to keep them, so.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move, I'm sorry, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Wow.
Wait a minute, you guess what?
I agree.
It's all right. I crisscrossed. Yeah.
It's okay. Change is good times. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, comment?
I just have, there will be many, uh, Memorial Day services over the weekend, uh, over Wahoo Drive, there's one on, uh, Saturday at 11:00 AM. Public's welcome to attend. There's one on, on Monday morning at the Wildwood Cemetery. They have a Civil War, uh, acknowledgement, reenactment up there with the cannon and, and, uh, I believe that one's at nine. And then there's one down in Matursville also, I'm not sure if other ones.
Wahoo Drive, too.
I mentioned Wahoo Drive's on Saturday, 11. There are two on, or actually on Memorial Day in the morning, but, you know, public's welcome to attend any of them, but, um, please take time to acknowledge and remember this holiday, because without those veterans that, that paid that ultimate price, we would not be sitting where we're at in freedom.
You know, I'd like to thank Commissioner Metzger for taking the time always to, to give a meaningful prayer, uh, for the veterans, community, service people. I know you, you don't have to do that, but you make sure you do it every, every week, and it's well appreciated by many people, not just us.
Thank you.
So, so last week I had the opportunity to, uh, attend Senator Yaw's Student Government Day, and that's why I was not here, and I appreciate you guys letting them know. Um, what was interesting was to see the young people and, uh, their enthusiasm about getting, um, involved in government and also their, uh, their abilities. We, we have a rich, uh, talent pool, and the challenge will be to get them to stay here, to stay here and to, to live here, uh, as we work to try to repopulate the county. And yesterday, while Commissioner Metzger was at Salvation Army, Commissioner Masser and I, uh, went to a roundtable that Senator Yaw sponsored, uh, with the Center for Rural Pennsylvania, which is a bicameral, meaning it's the Senate and the House, bipartisan, both parties, agency of state government that, um, really digs in on research for rural Pennsylvania. And, um, you know, we had an opportunity to share, and Jason Fink was there from the chamber, as well as the, uh, folks who sit on the board, but we had an opportunity to have a nice discussion about some of the challenges we face in rural Pennsylvania and, um, and what, what we need to do to be able to keep ourselves vibrant. Um, you know, we, we always hope that the people from the municipal areas, the, uh, urban areas are going to come here, and yet there was, uh, brought to our attention yesterday that, um, I guess, and I don't know whether it's a Wall Street Journal study or one of the major, um, that the exodus from the urban areas that happened after COVID has stopped. It's, it's, the, the urban areas have regained the population they lost through the pandemic. Um, so it's a challenge for us, and, uh, it's, it's not, you know, we had a, last night, the three of us were at the Township Association, uh, meeting with the township officials, and, um, we talked about some of the challenges we faced and some of the things we've tried to do as a county to, uh, always keep our, our eye on the ball of how do we get people here? You know, how do we get them? The things we've done with the housing starts and so forth, so we'll keep plugging away at it.
So this past, uh, Monday, we had a meeting with the Airport Authority, um, scheduled for an hour, it went out an hour and 45 minutes about the challenges they're facing right now. We had it in this room. And, uh, then, uh, yesterday morning, we went down to the airport at 8:00 AM for a tour of the hangars and looked at the renovations they're working on. Um, they're using their COVID monies to do the renovations. Um, I don't have the figures in front of me, but they did give us a, um, a chart of things they've completed since 2017.
Right.
Which I believe is about, uh, 2.2 million dollars. And then, um, it's things that they plan on completing by 2024. And I have that upstairs, so I can get that for the press later. Things that they've, they've done, and things they'll have completed by 2024, um, with their COVID monies.
I think it's important because the public are saying, why are they spending all this money? And, and why did they get so much COVID money? Do you guys know, know how much money they got in COVID?
Fourth largest amount in the state.
In the state.
Fourth largest amount.
And the reason why was because they just built a new terminal. So that money counted for that COVID.
When they allocated it, they looked at the 2018 spending.
Spending.
And because we had spent 17 million dollars on the terminal, uh, most of federal and state money, we got the fourth largest amount in the state. Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Harrisburg, and then little old Williamsport got the, got the fourth largest amount of ARP money.
So that, so that money, just the 3 million that we put into, from.
Yes.
Act 13, right? Probably leveraged almost 30 million dollars.
And some of that was luck. I mean, the one with the ARP, it was luck.
Commissioner, it was with.
It was a result of the incredible genius of my two colleagues.
You didn't know COVID was going to happen. No, but seriously.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot of money. I don't want to ever say free, because we all pay taxes.
Yeah. But, uh. But the important point for the public to understand is that if we hadn't done the terminal, we wouldn't even be having a conversation with anybody about landing at our airport because the TSA requirements for getting through security were not being met. So the whole, the whole terminals, part of the terminal construction was centered around bringing it up to what was required, uh, by law. And, um, and of course, you know, it's like you go in to fix something in the, in the kitchen and you put it all in the kitchen, but. And, and as a result of the meeting, actually, the executive director, I, I said, well, I didn't think we were going to have service for a year, but Richard Howell said, no, he thought it would be.
He said a year and a half, he thought, yeah, a year or less is what he said.
Year or less. And, and, uh, so people understand, there are two sides to the airport. One is commercial aviation, the other one is general aviation, right? And the general aviation is.
4,000 flights they've flown out of there.
Right.
That's all private, it's charters, it's businesses bringing their planes in here. It may be, uh, like Bucknell University bringing in the charters.
Like coming in.
Like coming engines, and, and they've done 4,000 flights, so.
And, and part of the reason.
That one's healthy.
Yeah.
It's, it's commercial.
That's very healthy. Part of the reason that they don't advertise this is because, as, as the manager pointed out to me, if a business comes in here, for example, to, uh, view how another business does something, they don't want it advertised because they, they are basically, um, maybe deciding to set up a plant or do whatever, so. One of the things I will say to any whoever takes over the job up front here is, it's really important, you know, Commissioner Metzger mentioned a couple of times, Commissioner Masser and myself, we mentioned times when we're out in the community. That's really important. Going out to these places and seeing, this afternoon, we're going out to Lairdsville to, um, to a ribbon cutting.
For the sewer.
For the sewer system, but it's important to get out and see how people are struggling and how people are living and how they're working to try to, uh, to make improvements.
Yeah. I, I'd like to, uh, go back to the airport for a second, and that is the fact that, um, when, when the rec authority, because the airport is an authority, when the rec authority was, you know, having a very difficult time making the golf course work, um, the county taxpayers had to subsidize it. And it was critical that we had to make decisions based off of that to either turn it around or, or, well, we couldn't sell it, we didn't know that at the time, but, uh, to turn it around. And so we did what was necessary to do that. In this case, this authority has many pilots on it, they understand aviation, and, uh, I got a better understanding in the last two minute, I mean, meetings of their intellect, their knowledge, uh, their ability, ability to communicate with the network that they need to, uh, to, to move forward with this airport. I feel a lot more comfortable now than I have in the past couple of years, uh, knowing that, uh, it's a lot more than just commercial airlines coming in and out, a, a lot more. And that, uh, if something were to happen, that we didn't get it right away, they're fine, they're not going to rely upon taxpayers' money to, uh, for their operating expense. That was a relief.
They're, they're relying on their leases.
Yeah, that's really important for the public to understand. A lot of what the Airport Authority does is leasing. They lease land, they lease buildings, I mean, everything from, uh, what they call the fixed-based operator, which is the, which is the entity that fuels and repairs planes over to Sooner Pipe, but that revenue from those leases is what Commissioner Masser's talking about, is that that covers, they, they, it's covered so that even if they don't have a, uh, uptick in commercial aviation and the ARP funds are gone, they can still, um, pay.
So we hear the public, when we went to Matursville High School back, uh, a few months ago, spoke to students, we had an 18-year-old student, that was their main focus. We asked him about a question, what's going on with the airport? You know, this is important for them to stay in the area because their father travels back and forth for business, and it's a, it's a family business. So that was an 18-year-old's question. We go to the township meeting last night, all the township supervisors there, you have any questions for the commissioners? One question, airport.
Yeah.
You know, how are we going to have a thriving community without an airport? So it's, it's on our radar, we have, we have, we've put pressure on the authority, we really have. We've had meetings with them, now we're down there doing tours, and, uh, there's a lot more things that they're, they're telling us, what their plan is, and, and I told them they have to market that stuff, they have to market it so the public knows what's going on. Otherwise, the public's not going to know, and there's going to be all kinds of rumors and, and anyone knows out there that, you know, this is going on, this isn't going on. So they are an authority. We appoint the members, and it goes that far.
And they're all volunteers.
They're all volunteers, but at the same time, uh, the county's liable for that airport, we're accountable for it, so we're going to get the right answers, and we're going to have meetings until we get them, so. Public comment? Yes, Tom.
I don't hear why he's going to waste some time, huh? But, uh, thank you for, uh, you know, the recognition of our emergency workers and, you know, they're just, once again, agents of God. And, uh, of course, Memorial Day coming up, um, honor fallen and just everyone that, uh, served in the military, we thank you for that. And, um, also, uh, just look at the, uh, the Constitution and, um, how the court system's supposed to work when you look at the federal Constitution, it's very limited. Um, and, and I imagine the state constitutions should be about the same as far as that goes, as far as the power of the courts, because once the courts take over, uh, changing law or put, they have an opinion on law, when people want to sue over, um, procedure or, uh, a law they think is unconstitutional, that's up to the people to have that changed through the representation, not through the courts. This is the problem with our country, I think, has been for decades, a century, well, decades for sure, that, uh, people want to come in and they don't like a law, they challenge it, and some judge decides it's no good, and they say it sets legal precedent. Well, it's, where's our constitution at? Why we have a constitution? If you're going to run your country like that, your government like that, you would just say, just do what the courts say. Why have a constitution? Why have representatives? You know, and that's, this is where we're at. And I'm a, I'm a little upset with the judge's decision to reverse the CBR, um, opportunity for, I don't, for my life of me, I can't think of a logical or even a moral reason to not let that be public record. I mean, not, why do you keep those records if you can't view them? And, and they should be, they should be viewable. The paper and the, and the, because the, the balloting is done, the votes are cast, it's all done, it's all history, so why have the records if no one's allowed to look at them? And it, to me, it's just foolishness, and it should, needs to stop. I'm not, I'm not, um, I have nothing personal against the judge or anyone else who looks at it the other way, but I think we need to come to some understanding of what brought this country about, um, to fight against this kind, it's, you know, oligarchy is what it is, and this is what Britain was doing with the colonists, and it's what they fought against. And I, I think to honor our fallen heroes, our dead, we need to turn this back around and get control of a representative government, right?
Thank you, Tom.
I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, but we have members in the audience that, that are candidates and have, have on the primary, and to give them an opportunity to talk if they, if they like, uh, because they're here.
Public comment, anyone?
Public comment.
Anyone can comment?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure. I mean, anybody can comment, but I'm not sure we should.
It's public comment.
Frame it as.
Yeah, anyone.
You know what I mean, that they're candidates, because otherwise, people who were in the primary might have said, well, hey, you guys know this, like, but.
I always.
But public comment is open to public.
That's right. And, uh, as chairman, I've always welcomed anyone to be up here and make a comment. And I've been very liberal with the time, allow my location, so I feel if people come to the meeting and want to have an opportunity to be heard, they should have the opportunity.
Absolutely.
They travel down here to, to attend the meetings.
I do have one online comment.
Yes.
Uh, Jeff will try. Religious, uh, zealotry, dogma, and interpretation of law should be shamed out of our public forums, facts and science over superstition and xenophobia.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, we are adjourned, our next meeting will be, uh, on, um, Thursday, June 1st, right here in this room, 10:00 AM.
Can I grab you guys real quick?
Yeah.
Forrest, can you come into that?
I can.
Man, you, you as well.
Thank you.